For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every end of its straw.
Thank you. All right, do we have any public discussion? Not seeing any, I would entertain a motion for the agenda in minutes. Motion by Jarx, third second. Second by Wacter, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Very unanimous. Looks like the foremen are not here yet.
Kasuth Regional is not gonna be here, it's just the information in your packets, yeah.
Perfect. Um, well, let's see. Derek, you coming in? Well, they're not here yet. All right. We have retirement, acknowledge for Don.
Don looks so happy. Cracked your face.
All right, so, um, Kasuth County wants to give you a huge congratulations and thank you for all the work you've done out for us over the last ten years. And so I've just got a few things to go over. He's got hundreds more that I could talk about, but these are just some of the highlights over the last ten years, so. About eight or nine years ago, we had a major phone system outage on Thanksgiving Day, and so we spent six or eight hours trying to get that up and running. Don has helped cover dispatch when other employees are sick and out. He's trained hundreds of firefighters across the county with our radio system and managed that for us. We had a crowd strike outage here a couple of months ago, and what happened was millions of computers worldwide were taken offline about one o'clock in the morning. And to fix it, you had to go touch every computer, and so we were able to before eight o'clock in the morning, get fifty computers back up and running so the county could function the next day. He solved cable buildings, multiple buildings that the cabling will be in production for fifty years at least. He's helped with video evidence in multiple criminal cases, and he's helped fix printers and squad cars, so deputies can write speeding tickets for all of you. So anyway, it's been a pleasure.
Truly enjoyed working here, look forward to coming to work every day and miss it a lot.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Byron.
Thank you, Byron.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Yeah, congratulations. I hope that you made it by so nice to you.
Yeah. All of you guys. Doug, are the foremen coming in? Maybe now.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The foreman, we've got some things going on this morning, so they're not able to come in, so I was just wondering, would it be possible just to postpone that till next week?
Yeah, it's fine.
Very good, thank you.
Don't go too far.
Thanks. Yeah.
I have my stuff in the.
That's fine.
We'll be ready pretty soon. All right, um, scratch that. K H C is not gonna come in until any questions or comments on that. Transfers made by our auditor, did anyone have any questions on those? All right, if not, we will let the record reflect that they are acknowledged. Change of tree direction for master matrix, do you guys wanna come on out for that?
Morning.
Good morning.
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 Scott Jacobson, I work for Summit Agricultural Group. The reason for I'm on the agenda is, when we built the original hog facility, at the time of building, we put in solar and trees, and the directions of the trees got switched, so what I'm asking you today is if we can amend the master matrix for the different direction of the trees. Instead of on the south side, putting them on the north side where they're originally where they're actually planted at. We reached out to the D N R, the D N R has okayed it, but we just wanted to make sure you guys are aware and okay with it as well.
Where's this at? Or just in general?
Uh, it's at the Burt twenty-one hog facility, um.
Straight west of Burt.
Okay.
Yeah, Mitch called me about it before, I, I was, I remember when we did the actual original permitting of the site and stuff. We talked to a couple of neighbors in the area, and you said there haven't been any concerns since it's been built and stuff, so.
So prior to submitting this, Scott submitted, and I talked to the closest neighbor there to the east and explained the situation to him, and it's pretty straightforward, actually, when Scott does all of our tree planting on the projects. And so hindsight, we probably should have had them on the north anyway, then it blocks the prevailing wind through the building, and then through the ground on the south, then you have more opportunity to drift snow on the road, et cetera. Um, so it's, it's just a matter of, everything meets the master of matrix. From a D N R standpoint and our permit, it's just the, what was approved was of the tree plant of trees on the south side of the building, rather than having drawn it on the north side where they were planted. But all the trees are planted, and it's mainly just a formality of documentation and compliance, so pretty straightforward.
Yep. Any questions from board? Okay, I'll second that, any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carried unanimous, thank you guys.
All right, thank you, as always, if anything comes up, just give us a shout, thank you.
All right. And we'll do construction whenever Doug is here. Get this done.
We're gonna have a long break again.
We're gonna have a long break.
Just a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Where did you get that?
In your packet. Page eighteen.
Did I just miss all? Right there.
Yeah. It's straight west of Burt on the gravel.
Okay, yep, yep.
I don't know, four miles, three, four, or five miles somewhere in there, it's not too far. I think it would have been my district when we built it, because that was before our districts changed, but, yeah. Do you know if Mark is ready?
Um, I can check.
Morning, Molly.
Good morning, how are you today?
Pretty good.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. Morning. All right, we are ready for construction right away, Doug?
Oh, yeah, we've got a couple of things here, resurfacing plans are, um, we're getting those ready, so I do have them here. This would be for the road, I call it Irvington from one sixty-nine, B fifty-five from one sixty-nine over to P sixty, Laverne Sexton Road. The Bow Hobart Road from the E Road up to Highway eighteen, and then B sixty-three in Laverne Township from the Bow Hobart Road over to Highway seventeen. Those three projects, all of them are farm-to-market, excuse me. The one is federally funded, that'd be the job, the Irvington Road, B fifty-five, where it's got federal funds and the other ones are farm-to-market, so if the board could sign those, please. We'll get those off for letting. And then we do have the contracts back from our local letting recently, so we do need to get those signed as well. Part of that motion, or resolution to accept that project was to approve of Kyle signing those. There's that, and there Kyle. They're just keeping them in a pile. They're about, looks like about six documents that we need to be signed.
Any order or just go on?
These are all the same copy of the contract, and then we've got the bonds here. Let's give you all three. You'll sign those, please. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, and then there's one tile crossing, we've been in contact with a gentleman by the name of Al Diven. My understanding that, and this is a location map that should be in your folder, electronic folder. A gentleman by the name of Al Diven, who is a tenant for Roth Kasuth LLC, landowner. This would be south of Highway nine, one sixty-nine. One mile, and it'd be one fifty Avenue runs straight into.
South, yep, south.
So just to give you a little bit of a bigger picture there. This tile, there's a county tile, the blue line is not located where the county tile is. The county tile runs in section twenty-one, crosses one fifty Avenue into section twenty-nine, and runs up the Francis Rodderman Farm there. What Roth is proposing to do is go through four hundred and twenty street and hook onto that county tile. There's a drain approximately half a mile north of there where it outlets. They have been discussing with us, with us, I think they're doing a little bit of research right now to see what the elevation is of the tile that is in the road ditch where that is at. We continue to visit with them, I guess my question is, if they would get all the paperwork to us, would the board have any concerns of us granting them a verbal, giving them verbal permission to go ahead and do that work?
That's fine.
We will do that then, thank you. Make sure. And I do not have any other work in the road right away.
All right, anything for discussion?
Uh, yeah, next week I would like the board to approve a pledge to support safety strategies, again, I let, uh, put that pledge in your folder. In fiscal, in twenty twenty-two, July of twenty twenty-two, the board did pass a resolution to support a grant that was going on with the Iowa County Engineers Association. Safe safety funding for the state, for all the counties. And part of the plan that is being developed would be this pledge, then the Kasuth County would support those strategies. I have it on the agenda for next week, it's more or less saying that we will support trying to make our roads as safe as possible and decrease the fatalities and serious injuries between the years of twenty thirty and twenty fifty. So I think it's good with this safety action plan, if there are funds that become available and we have roads that qualify, this is one of the first things that needs to be done, so. It's just part of the process, so we will take care of that next week. I might continue to work on a budget. Last week, we talked a little bit about the junkyard to the west of Sway City, Mr. Burgess hired an attorney, and our attorney's office, Stephanie and I are visiting with that attorney right now to continue to try to get that cleaned up. So we are working on that right now. In construction, fifty-seven twenty-six oh four, the bridge down by Dana Arndorfer's George Gunthers. The marines have pretty much got things cleaned up, and now we're just trying to get the dirt work completed. And we are crushing gravel, ready gravel and excavating, it's crushing gravel of Rothler's gravel pit. We continue to work on FEMA, last week, we finished up cleaning up road ditches that had accumulated stocks of FEMA activity, so we'll get that put in there. Working with that. We continue to be able to mow roads, and we are mowing roads, trying to get everything taken care of that way. We did do some interviewing yesterday afternoon for the Sway City open position. We're preparing to interview for the Laverne shop, and we are receiving applications for the position in Lakota. We received our new motor grader, we received our two loaders, and we continue to work on equipment. Last week, we attended the county engineers conference, and I just wanted to let the board know I was awarded Outstanding County Engineer Achievement Award from the Iowa County Engineers Association. This award is.
Congratulations.
This award is for outstanding contributions to the engineering profession in the field of county engineering, and I just want to make sure that I received that award, but the Kasuth County engineer staff does an awful lot of work, and the secondary road department does an awful lot of work, and without their work, Kasuth County engineer's office would not be as successful as ours, so thank you to them. And then just a little bit on a safety note. When I go and visit a little bit with different clubs, different organizations, sometimes I talk about safety in Iowa, and right now, if you're driving on the interstate, there's a lot of signs out there, especially the message boards that you see across the interstate, but as of yesterday, December nine, there was three hundred and twenty-four fatalities due to, they call them crashes, and last year, we had three hundred and seventy-seven. As a state, we're trying to get that number below three hundred, but it's difficult. There's a lot of things that contribute to that number, speed, people not wearing seat belts, distracted drivers, drivers under the influence of drugs and alcohol, and if anyone is listening, and especially the board, everybody with holiday travel this year, I think it's good to remind everybody, drive safely, make sure you're wearing seatbelts, drive the speed limit, and we don't want anybody in our families to have any kind of tragedy this year, and, or any other tragedies. Try to do our best to get that word out, drive safely, so. That's really all that I have.
All right. Any questions for Doug?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, that's great.
Thank you, we appreciate your hard work, makes the county look good, thank you, appreciate that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We got a couple training and repair requests.
Molly's always problem.
With Sig Molly after.
Yeah.
She'll chase you down.
Whenever you're ready.
I've got request number one forty-five on D fifty-one, the main tile, there, this is a request from Tom Beustrom. There's in the CRP there, a couple of holes, south of the gravel underpass, a new patch to repair.
All right, and I got one forty-six in section twenty of Lincoln, where Lucas Eichenberger plugged or broken tile on lateral twenty. Any questions, otherwise entertaining motion? Motion by class, second by Wacter? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Thank you. You're good, I was just double checking. All right.
You got it, minute for drainage yet?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going through some of my notes the other day, and we talked about ditch four and the FEMA project. We had, it's still got a, put in four hundred, seven hundred thousand from COVID that was supposed to collect.
Yeah, we still have mine, it should be coming, yep.
Just curious, is there anything being done on that lately?
I haven't heard any updates, but it's in their hands for processing the paperwork.
We haven't forgot it, don't we?
No, we haven't.
They're sending emails, but they're processing it.
I'm just trying to clean up all my.
Yes.
Yeah, no, it's still, it's still in the works, but that's.
It's a big amount, not, not to remember.
It is, no, trust me, I haven't forgotten that.
Is that the only FEMA project we got that's not complete?
Of the old ones, yeah.
That's probably the biggest one, and there's, there's some smaller ones tied in that same project number, so it, D D four open ditch isn't the only one, but that project is probably the last one to close out from.
So some of them laterals are tied in, they got the same number?
No, some other projects around the county.
The same disaster.
Yeah.
The same disaster.
Yeah. Yeah, from that time period.
So there's FEMA money's supposed to be coming in for that drain four open ditch?
There's still more to come in, we've already received about a million, but there's more coming, yes.
Do you know the amount coming? And?
Over half a million, hopefully, is what's anticipated, yeah.
How much is left on it?
What do you mean?
The project, outstanding warrants.
Well, when we had that public hearing, it was substantially over a million, it was close to one point one million, and we did a seven hundred thousand dollar assessment, but the extra time of when the funds actually come in, depending on how the time period plays out. It should cover what's there, the question is how much is extra, hopefully.
FEMA should cover the interest though.
No, they don't pay interest for anything. I, I wish they did, of course, but no, they don't.
Lot of interest on a million dollars.
There is, but.
What do we have from FEMA stating the number that we might get, or the, you know, bills, or whatever we submitted to?
We.
Is there something that I could be brought up to date on that, since it?
We have a, like the documents that were submitted for closeout would show summary of the projects and stuff, that would probably be the most detailed thing we would have, I would think.
Yeah, because I know it's a, you know, it's still a concern, so I need that.
It's a big dollar figure, but.
Yeah.
So you'd have the interest on a million one plus four hundred thousand that wasn't collected?
What do you mean, interest on a million one?
Well, as it was going on, there's interest on that million one and all those warrants FEMA didn't pay.
Yeah, so there was an initial three hundred thousand dollar assessment last year figuring for the fifteen percent of the landowners.
Right, but that didn't include interest either.
No, that didn't include interest, because we couldn't, we couldn't calculate when other money was coming in, so that was intentionally left off in the beginning for the first year, now granted, this, this assessment this year was the second year, so that's when we knew we needed to do more, because of how everything was.
But the seven hundred thousand didn't include interest either, that was directed.
Yeah, yeah, it did, it did, it did. The outstanding balance that was calculated was with interest to December first, if I remember right. So that was, it was factored.
The only interest that we have outstanding in is on the four hundred.
Would be what was left after the assessment this year, correct, yes, so roughly plus or minus four, yeah.
So if somebody asked me, that's, they did ask me, and I didn't know the answer, so I.
Yep.
Is that drain fifty-one oh eleven?
For fun.
The four, open, the four open ditches, yeah.
The four open ditch, and that's the only one you're talking about right now, that's the one you're talking about?
Yeah, that's, that's a big dollar figure, yeah.
Other than that, I think they're smaller.
Yeah, the other ones are smaller fixes here and there.
Do we know what the balance is on that drain right now, I mean?
That's what we were just talking about.
Maybe otherwise, is that the four hundred thousand dollar number? That's the balance?
Should, should be, I haven't seen it since the assessments.
Negative, right, negative, what we need to.
That it, that it owes, yeah, correct, but that should be.
Is that what you were expecting to be covered by FEMA?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So, it, it should be taken care of when the FEMA funds come in. Will depend on time, of course, but yeah, that was, that was the intent, that that should cover that, and have some cushion for interest, so, yep.
Is there a contact for FEMA that we, we generally use?
Our consultant.
To get updates on that?
Our consultant is Leon, he's been here a couple of times, but.
We have Freeman.
Leon Freeman?
Freeman, yep.
And he'll be able to tell us for sure that, you know, those dollars are coming in?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I mean, he is not part of FEMA, they did have some questions on prop damages recently, but he got, he worked with Tyler and got a response to them on that. So I mean, yeah, that's, that's what we're expecting right now, but they have been asking a couple of questions and working through the paperwork, so. I'm expecting it to be moving along, but we don't have a date that they're gonna pay by next Thursday or anything, no, we don't.
The state hasn't paid their fifteen percent, are they caught up with the fifteen percent?
I don't think they, they, we haven't gotten the state's ten percent.
I mean, ten percent.
Yep, yep, no, that's at the end, that's after, that's after everything is closed with FEMA, that comes at the end. So that would be ten percent.
Then it'd be over four hundred that's still owed, because you're expecting the tenth from the state that hasn't been paid yet.
What do you mean, be over four hundred that would be owed?
State has paid up to, they've paid on the million one.
The feds have paid.
But the state has not.
The state hasn't, no.
Right, so then there's still more money owed than the four hundred, is my point.
Are you talking what the drain owes, or what the state and federal government owes?
What the state owes.
Yes, there, there'd be the state's percentage too.
What the state owes the drain?
Right, so I'm.
For accounting, yeah.
Did they pay up to anything at once?
Other projects, they would have.
Other projects, but not this one.
Yeah, so.
It's still outstanding, they're working through the paperwork.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the process, they always pay at the end, the state is always the last one.
I guess my point is there's money more than the four hundred was outstanding on that drain. I guess my point is there's money more than the four hundred was outstanding on that drain. When somebody looks at it and they, they jump me about it, I go, there's more than four hundred, I understand that. Because, but I want clear that there's federal money and state money that is not paid yet on drain.
Correct.
And we just don't know how much that state money is?
They're negotiating, FEMA is still negotiating with the.
With the state?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have any of those documents with me right now, but yeah, it, it is in the works.
So that should bring that, that drain at least um okay?
Should, that's what we had figures for, all, all of those drains we talked about last year was, they should have been squared up, yeah.
Any other big things that we have to take care of before Jack and I leave or that we should at least know about? In drainage, I can't think of any other one that's big.
Lawsuits that are still in process, but that's not.
But aren't you ever ending?
That's not a surprise to anyone.
Look at his look, why'd you look over here?
Good, good luck, you'll get them next. Any other questions you have, I?
Oh, you wanna mention why I talked to Derek before the meeting and about the iPads? I said I would appreciate it if I could keep my iPad because of the lawsuits with Joe Gossi. Cause that's the only way I got to communicate with the attorney that's through it, so when it's all done. Figure something out then.
Yeah.
Until then, I think it'd be advantageous for me to keep it.
Yep, and I, I agree with that, I mean, he's gotta have a official form of communication to handle those things and receive documents and correspondence and stuff, so.
Somebody else would like to volunteer to take my position? And deal with the lawsuits?
And I know he already has um other stuff for Amber and Howard, so nobody needs it, so.
Yeah.
We've already talked to Eric about that, so.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
And it just doesn't make sense for you to keep that, that's my opinion.
Yep.
I agree.
I'd, I'd like to get rid of it in the form of.
Well, go off the grid for a while, or forever.
Yeah, no, that's good to mention that, we did talk about that before the meeting a little bit. Any questions or concerns on that from anyone?
Nope.
Sounds good, anything else for drainage?
Where do we stand, or I guess what is the next step in the process for this year's FEMA submissions?
They're working through it right now and just whenever they get that other one finished over there, we'll submit that.
Oh, in Westlake?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and that's moving right there.
Last I knew that they hadn't been over there to do that, I don't know, have you driven by it the last week?
I think, I've seen where they've been working.
Yeah, I don't think it's finished yet.
No, probably not.
Two hundred and nine thousand is what it was raised to, competitive bid?
No.
Two hundred and six.
Two hundred and six? I got.
Is that the total due number?
Read that one? No, 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 four, he's talking competitive bid, different, different.
Oh, I'm like geez.
My money is still there too.
The drainage, drainage meeting.
Ten percent of that?
Yeah.
I think for our internal policy, isn't it anything over fifty? We need multiple quotes on?
We need multiple quotes, but you go up to two hundred and six thousand multiple.
Yeah, it's.
Without hiring an engineering firm.
Yeah.
That's a statewide.
But we still have to public here over fifty.
It's a discretion to.
Yeah, you still need the public here.
Yep.
I thought, what are they doing with it?
I haven't got any of that yet on those treated ambers, so you might need to suck with it.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Alright, well, thanks Marge.
Thank you, Marge. At the drainage meeting, Roger was given a plaque for his years of service for the board.
Nice, yeah, congrats.
Congratulations, Roger.
Were you on there?
He gave you a plaque and kicked me out today.
Were you on there since you started with the board here or?
Not quite.
Okay.
Nine years.
Nine years? Very good.
Congratulations.
It's a good board.
Yeah.
It does a lot of good for the upper part of Iowa.
Yeah, where the drainage is heavy.
I think, is it Doug from Hancock took your spot?
No.
Oh, 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 nice.
Who was it?
The name will have to be known.
Clarence?
No, no Clarence is an old timer.
McCurnan?
About a four letter last name, Curnan.
Okay.
Very good.
Alright.
Thanks, Marge.
Sounds good.
Marge was there and our next supervisor was there, I don't know if he learned anything.
A little. There, two hundred and six thousand, that was a raise, right, what happened?
It was a hundred and ninety.
Yeah, it was one ninety something, but they, so they used to have just a flat dollar figure that it was capped at. It was the twenty-five thousand or something before.
Yes, start when our first year, I think it was twenty-five and then we went to fifty.
Well.
And then we went to competitive bids.
Yeah, then they, they tied the state DOT competitive bid threshold. Last year, probably two years, two years ago, I suppose, two, maybe three.
Three years ago.
It's been a while, but they correlated with that because that number gets adjusted every year. Prior to it was actual laws and code change to change that number, now it's changed administratively, so. They streamlined that a little bit.
Yeah, well, the engineering firms didn't appreciate it.
I just whispered to Amber, I said, I can't believe the engineers let that go through.
Yeah, they, they didn't really like it, but it's pretty tough to justify fifty thousand dollar engineering fee on a hundred thousand dollar project.
Or a sixty thousand dollar project and fifty thousand in engineering.
Yeah, and we've had, we've had some of them and, and I'd say the farmers, they do not appreciate us.
And I mean, you can always still engage an engineer if we need to for any reason, even if the dollar figure is smaller. But it's at least our discretion now rather than the code forcing it.
Well, you could engage one for a repair request if you really wanted to, yeah.
Could, yeah, but.
Don't have to.
Right.
Just aside, you know, uh farmer told me that uh homes grounded in Cassuth County up north and in Minnesota. And he said he'd like to complain about his taxes in Iowa, but he'd have to do it with his tongue in his cheek because his taxes in Verbal County are fifty-two dollars an acre.
Wow.
Well, I've got a, a landowner in the northern part of the county, but he lives in Minnesota, a client of mine. And uh just two miles into the border and he's building a new house north of Sweet City because he doesn't want to live in Minnesota anymore and pay taxes there.
So as much as people want to complain about taxes in, in Iowa, maybe we should go across the border.
I don't know if we wanna be compared to Minnesota though.
Well, we're higher priced in Wisconsin and Illinois and South Dakota and North Dakota, I get it.
Yeah, that's, that's not one I would wanna compare to. But alright, anything else that way, otherwise can go into auditor discussion.
Okay, I put the Cassuth County eminent domain commission list on your desk. Cause you will be approving that at the first meeting of the new year. So if you could please look through it, I did highlight one of them on there, he no longer lives in the area, so he will have to be replaced. And then if you see of anybody else that you know that.
Yeah, we're out.
Is not around, um has passed away or whatever, um if you could let me know by next week. Um if you can come up with somebody to replace the one and, or if there needs to be any other changes. That way we can get it updated before the first meeting, so.
So they have to live in the type town area?
Not necessarily, but, so there has to be twenty-eight residents. A fourth of them have to be owners, operators of ag property, he is not one of them. A quarter has to be owner um of city property. Um a quarter has to be licensed real estate or brokers and the other fourth property value knowledge by reason of occupation. So my guess is that's where he would have fit in, um.
Okay.
I'm not exactly sure, but that would be my guess.
So say if they had to live in proximity to type town or row, you could have another. You wanna be uneven at the meeting?
Yeah, I was retired.
We don't need any more farmers, though.
Well, he can be a retired supervisor.
You can be a retired supervisor, I guess that would give you property knowledge, I don't.
Just label it differently.
Yeah.
But sounds good, yeah, we can.
Yeah, look, look at it, please, and, and let me know, um. Kyle, we need to get together to look at the sanitarian position.
Yeah.
Um get that going.
Yeah, after we get here, we can talk right away.
Okay, and then we have set up the OSF office and uh Judge Anne Gales is gonna come and administer those next Tuesday at eight o'clock. Do you want that on the agenda or do you want it before the agenda?
Yeah.
Hmm, it can be on.
On the agenda?
That's fine.
Next.
And we're gonna do that right away at eight.
Next Tuesday?
Yes, the seventeenth.
Call a meeting to order, pledge, public discussion, and then we'll do that.
The OS, okay.
And then, then we'll do agenda and that's after that.
Okay, um yes, the seventeenth, um and then that's done um before the end of the new year. Of course, they don't take office until after the second, but you can do the OSF office at any time. Um and so we'll get that out of the way and then that'll be done, so uh eight o'clock next Tuesday. And it works for both Howard and Amber and Roger Fisher, so there's just four of us.
Perfect.
Um and those all are ready to go, um we've been working on valuations, um it's going really good. We did get all the TIF, new TIF districts entered, um that seems to have gone really well. Uh we have twenty-six new TIF districts, hundred and ninety-eight new parcels, or eighty-nine, something like that. Um so it's a lot, but so we got it all entered and done, um I did send an email.
Yeah, thank you.
I did send an email out to Heidi um this morning, Heidi Cool, um let me see, I think. Um because um after we did it, um it shows that those winter bins won't receive TIF money until June of twenty twenty-six, which means it won't be collected until September of twenty-six and then March of twenty-seven. So I did send an email to Heidi this morning, making sure that is correct, um and then I'll.
Did you look at all of them? Or just some?
No, all of them, so none of, the only one that's gonna be receiving money for the Buffalo Township is the one we're cur- currently have.
There's.
But none of the windows.
There should be revenue for next year.
Well, it's not showing up that there's any tip, and when you look at the, the list that you guys have. It says June first, twenty twenty-six, that, that spreadsheet that she sent, it says June one, twenty twenty-six. Yeah, if you look on the side there, it says June one, twenty twenty-six, right, am I, did I read that right, Carter? Oh, on the left, sorry.
June one, well, all the years here, but the first year would be.
That's fiscal year of twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-six, right? Fiscal year, June one, twenty twenty-six is the first five percent, you follow it across, that's the first six hundred and eight thousand.
It's twenty twenty-six, June one of twenty twenty-six.
Or is that zero, twenty-five?
But total TIF revenue does not get collected until June first, twenty twenty-six.
Yes, which would mean we, taxes have already been collected prior to that, so we won't receive any until the fall of twenty twenty-six.
Right.
Yes, so it won't.
I mean, that's, that's what she gave us.
Okay.
Yes, right, and, and that's what, when I um, when we get all of our TIF valuations, it is not showing any value coming up for this next year. So I will double check, you know, we'll go through that with her and make sure, but it is not showing. And that's what that, to me, that's what that says too, is that there won't be anything until twenty twenty-six, the fall of twenty twenty-six.
Other than what comes out of the Buffalo.
Buffalo Township, yes.
Because of the setting the base value now, yep. So that, yeah, that would be a year.
Just so we froze it.
Yeah.
We froze it, froze, until following.
Yeah.
So it puts you back.
So if the state rolls back commercial property taxes again. Twenty twenty-six taxes won't be affected, the twenty twenty-sevens would.
Say that again, Roger?
The state is talking about rolling back property taxes again.
Will they roll, they do a rollback every year?
They roll back everything, so.
Are the, are the windmills always included in that rollback?
Yes.
Or do they just go off of that, you know, base that?
Just, just thinking out loud that you can't spend the money yet because we really don't know what we're going to assess yet until this year's legislation is over.
I visited with a couple legislators about that and they weren't foreseeing huge changes, but adjustments to what was already done last year.
Yeah, what did they roll back last year, the county's portion and the city's portion?
Oh, I, I know, but I mean, basically they were saying expect the same thing again this year.
Yeah, it's not gonna get better, I don't think.
No.
But yes.
It won't get better.
No.
No, it's not gonna get better, that's my point.
But yes, the, the windmills do get the relax also.
Yeah, that's why it's such a shaky ground.
Yeah.
So did we, I, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to be here the week that you guys did the um um the finish the TIF stuff or whatever, was it, is there an internal loan that happened?
Yes, no.
Has that already been amended to be taken out of the budget or?
The, it, it hasn't been amended, there hasn't been a budget amendment, but it, the internal loan has been done.
And it's for how much?
Million.
It's a million? So we kinda have a million dollars sitting there, we can't use?
Right, my point is to be very careful on how you spend it, cause the tax dollars coming back in might not match what we do going out.
Yeah, all we're gonna get this year is the Buffalo, the original Buffalo, which is like a hundred and forty-some thousand.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, that's, that could mean not good things for the property taxes. Coming up.
Great.
That's all I have.
Alright, thanks. Jack?
Uh you went with me to drainage meeting and I hope you learned something. It was, I guess, the biggest thing was we talked about the raise of the two hundred and six thousand. But you always gotta be very careful doing that anyhow, um nothing new in drainage law, nothing new proposed. The biggest changes that I see coming in drainage laws are gonna be with levy districts and they're gonna be on the Mississippi and the Missouri. They're quite a ways away from us, so, but they're still, it's in our drainage policy. So we still have to keep an eye on what the levy districts do to make sure that they don't change some state law that affects what we do. Cause it's all tied together as of now.
Yep.
That's about it.
Josh? Hi. Carter?
I just attended the conference board meeting for hiring a assessor.
Yep.
Did you hire a new assessor?
We did vote to hire.
We extended the offer, yeah, waiting to hear back from him, so.
Extended the offer. We've not heard back, is he?
I have not heard any, I was gonna go talk to Brandon during the meeting or after the meeting.
But seemed like a really nice guy, visited for a while after the, after the meeting.
Yep.
I hope he accepts.
Yep. Um yeah, so same what Carter just said, and um I wasn't able to get down to IDDA's meeting, but I did talk to Spencer Peck. Um, yeah, so same what Carter just said, and, um, I wasn't able to get down to IDDA's meeting, but I did talk to Spencer Peck. After it, and he visited with, um, a legislator and, um. Another individual about the issues we're having with DD ninety, railroad east of Lakota, um. Spencer sent a couple emails, again, even recently, I sent a follow-up email and incorporated our, um, congressional staff and, um. Local, or like our state representatives and senators, and trying to push that ball a little bit harder because they are. Completely ignoring things, I mean, we've gone over three months without a single email response, um, so.
May, maybe we should just send them the bill for five hundred thousand dollars or a million and see if they respond.
They won't.
They won't, and that's the unfortunate reality, um, and at, at the end of the day, this is. I'm trying to give them a little bit of time here, but we may need to have a closed session conversation with our attorney about this one because. It, it has drug on for a long time, so that's probably something we will talk about into the new year, but, um.
There's more than, more than one lawsuit right now going on in the state.
Yeah, and, and I've actually talked with Tyler about it too, he said they have another situation, um. That they're trying to work on, kind of similar too, so I think it's, we're not alone across the state in dealing with this, but at the same time, it's. Kinda beyond the point of being ridiculous, so.
Well, there's, there's damage been done to the landowners north of that.
Substantial.
Permanent damage to some of their farms. So.
And, I mean. In, in some regards, I think it would have been a little bit easier if we had maybe moved through with the improvement project that was proposed. But at the same time, that improvement project was figuring that the landowners would pay for that crossing and. I agree with the landowners, I don't feel that's right, and I think the state law change clarifies that that's not the intent of the legislature, but. They are battling at every point because it's a big bill for them, um, but it's also a big bill for us too, so. We're gonna have to get that squared away and I, I don't know if there's. Hope for a resolution peacefully outside of court or not, but it's, it's drug on for a long time, so. We might need to push that a little harder.
Yeah, I guess before next spring, you should probably jet it again and get it open so you can give them some relief.
If we could get in there when the ground's frozen, that might be an opportunity, but.
Go, go jet it and run, or run a cutter through it and. I don't.
Un, unfortunately, I think part of the issue there is the one intake that's inside the right away is pretty low, and I think that's probably sucked some debris in too. Because when we did try and set a camera in there, you could see there was water coming over something, and it looked like there was light shining down. Either there or just past there, so, um, I don't know if that intake's helping us or hurting because there's. There's very clear excess water pressure at that intake when the rains are heavy, I mean, when the whole area is flooded and there's. Three feet of water on top of it, you can see the water blowing out of that intake, so it's getting to the railroad tracks, it's just not getting through them. Which is. Unfortunate, to say the least.
Well, rest of the main works, you see water coming out of the dial there by the bridge, so.
Yeah, and we've replaced multiple sections along there that had tree roots damaging and slowing that down, so I mean. We've made attempts to fix the other areas, but that's been a consistent problem.
Well, some of the farmers are getting invasion. And I don't blame them.
I don't, I don't blame them either, it's, it's been a long time. And, yeah, I guess just. I'm still trying to follow the channels and do things by the books, but at the end of the day, I don't know what options the railroad's giving us, so. We will probably need to talk about that into the new year, I have a feeling.
Almost like this time that you do a conference call with the attorney next, sometime next year or this year, yeah, and. Actually put something in place so that it looks like you're doing something.
Yeah, maybe next week if we don't have a packed agenda, maybe we could see if we can get good one on the phone for that.
Yeah, we don't have a lot on the agenda for next week, let me know, so we can get it on the agenda if you want it on.
Yep.
At, at least have him start doing the letter writing.
Well, he's, he's responded to them multiple times, it's just.
Put more teeth in it.
Well, yeah, I think teeth are gonna come in a different form than a letter, but. Yeah, that's, that's a big issue. So, no, that was something I was working on a little bit this last week, but, um, trying to. Attack that problem from a couple different angles and see if we can get a resolution somehow. Otherwise.
To stick it honest, it's pretty plain now that they have to do it.
It is. All right, otherwise, anything else, otherwise we can kinda take a late, long break here and come back at ten forty-five. For our conference call with Palo Alto.
Sounds good.